Pursuant to Governor Achilles, March 28, 2025, advised order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, JL Chapter 38, Section 18, extending remote participation for June 30, 2027. Meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remotely. Agenda items listed, those reasonably anticipated, body care, not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion due extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSP and the school committee recorder and will be rebroadcast. So let's call the roll. We have at least one person remotely. Sarah Tanetti?
Here.
Allison? Unmute yourself, Allison, please. I'll see if I can get that. Jason?
Here.
Andy Potter is not here. Bill Ong?
Here.
Bill?
Here.
Diane?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Rich?
Here.
And Steve Danna?
Here.
Allison, can you unmute your show? She sent me an email that she was asked to be promoted and she just joined. Yeah, I did that.
I think she marked her present.
She is present, yeah. Okay, let's move ahead.
Hello?
Perfect. Do I have a motion for the minutes of August 28, 2025? It's two approvals. Got a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if there's a mistake in the minutes, but had me joining the subcommittee on extracurriculars or curriculars? And I don't remember me volunteering.
So why don't you make a motion to amend the strike then?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, so I'm gonna just take this as our revised motion, so we don't have to vote remotely twice.
Okay.
I don't think I have a vote. Anything else?
No.
Okay, so as amended, Sarah?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I. Turn over to the superintendent. And Bill, sorry about that.
No problem. So.
I'll volunteer, but.
Sometimes I'll have a minute splurged when I'm editing them. So I think let's just jump in with our student members. We're joined today by Mirabelle. I forget who it is, Mirabelle.
Welcome back.
Yeah, welcome back. And Tyler Campbell is a new addition, so welcome Tyler. I don't know who's speaking first, but you are, so just tell us what's going on.
So we have officially been back to school for a little over a week and a half, and the school is full energy. Lots of exciting things are already in full swing. We've had a really good first day. In the morning, we agreed to buy our two great principal and vice principals. And then we went into the gym, we spun for prizes, and then, you know, we got together, we talked about sports and, you know, we have to talk about the fall festival, which is really good. Our incoming freshman class seems to be adjusting very well. And with the new schedule, I've adjusted very well to it. And I think a lot of the freshmen are finding their way into the clubs, which is really good. And, you know, the upperclassmen are, they've been doing pretty good. All the classes have been running well, but the new entrepreneurship class that has been here, I've only heard great things from it. And so I'm really good. Sports-wise, we, football team, first game of the season won 35 to 0, which was good. Griffin Tupants, our corner, won Defensive Player of the Week in the paper, which is really good. And our soccer team also put on a good performance. We won our first game, I believe, 2 to 1. I couldn't get the score on that. But we, so yeah, that was good. We started unified basketball, which was really good. We had our first practice yesterday. We have a big game Friday in football against Leo Rivals. And the girls volleyball team has won four out of the last five games this year so far. And the captain told me that they're all coming together as a team with our communication skill. And cross-country, had a great home opener, Ever Pachico Senior, good friend of mine, won the boys' race and set a new course record with a time of 15 out of 32. And the previous was 1558, so 20 seconds.
It's a five-minute mile. And that was set from somewhere now like a decade ago, which is. And our other seniors, Amelia De Sales?
Yes.
That's what I think, won the girls' race with a time of 1921, which is also very good. There you go.
Thank you. Last night, it's very true, and you're saying thank you to our guidance council. So last night, they put together an awesome college planning night for any college guidance users and their families. It was super informative, super helpful. Someone personally who started that up and was feeling a little overwhelmed. It was great to have all of these notes come back to me and all this clarification, instructions. Our guidance team is amazing. They do amazing things all year round. Go guidance team! So under challenges, this is both like good news and a challenge. I mean, the drawings are literally hanging up everywhere, so it's very fitting. But the new plans for our potential new school building are out, which is super exciting. They put like a billboard in the front of the school at all times of day. I've seen students like out with their teachers looking at it. I hear discussions about it all around the school. Everybody's super excited. But everyone is also a little nervous because we have a big vote coming up. A lot of us high school students can't actually vote, so it's been difficult for us to see this potential and not know what's gonna happen. So this is your reminder to tell everyone you know to vote yes for your guidance on November 4.
Great. Christopher, do you have anything to add?
Just have a couple things, so just jump over here.
Yeah, wherever, wherever.
Mirabelle reminded me, I will often do a little lap around the school as I'm heading out. And I headed around the back way to the fields and everything. For Tuesday, I'm trying to find the sign doing selfies. Anyway, I'd also like to welcome our student school committee reps, two of our outstanding Spartans, both are seniors. Mirabelle Myers returned for her second year, and Tyler Campbell joins us. We appreciate that being here, representing our school. I also appreciate that because I have to be here with all of these adults, having a couple of my peeps here makes me a little more comfortable thanks to you both. As they said, I just wanna add a little bit, we've gone off to a smooth start. Everyone's adjusted to the new schedule very quickly, and we're having very few issues with phones and electronic devices. Then I've been in classrooms, making my way around the building, and it was our students working hard to explain the properties of a line on a graph with no visuals and specific rules on the permitted vocabulary used. That's hard to figure out how they do that, but it's really amazing stuff. Our ninth graders digging deep into texts such as integrity as they read for meaning analysis and evaluation. Have no idea what's going on in AP Physics, but the students are working on really challenging stuff. And I'm like, okay, this looks great. I'm told by a young man, I know that Spanish four is quite challenging. We have some new equipment arrived for our fitness room, and soon the room will be completely updated and ready for fitness units and PE. Kids have been amazing, and we're very fortunate to live in school. We have five new teachers in the building. Thought of this as I was walking out of the building, I saw one of them just leaving for the day. Our teacher Danny Odell moved up the hill from DuBois. Maria Fold is an orchestra teacher that we share with the other schools in the district. Brett Harrelson is our new math teacher. Tristana Nunez, Spanish. Ashley Murtaugh is a long-term student in social studies for Vito Marzado. And our very own Monument alum Lucas Kissel is teaching science. We're thrilled to have them all. They jumped right in, they're all doing very well. And we couldn't be more pleased with having them join our team to teach our students. On off the press, Julie Story, who probably many of you know, will be joining our front office team as an administrative assistant. We're extremely excited to have Julie join us. This position took a really long time to fill, but I'm worth the wait to get Julie. Aside from that, challenges, we're still looking for a biology teacher. And we've had Beth Cook teaching several sections of it, and some other folks filling in the rest of the visas. But other than that, we're off to a strong start.
Good. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Jake?
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
Hi. Lots of good news, one striking challenge. Set the table. We have, last time I was here, I was, you know, excited to report how many minutes we had bought back for learning by tweaking our lunch and recess schedule. And then reality set in, and we have tweaked it again. So we still have more minutes per day for learning. But we did extend lunch and recess to get almost a full hour between the two. And that has led to about 340 much happier children in the building. And I think families are grateful, and, you know, our staff is grateful too. They were worried, and Ellie and I spent the Labor Day weekend sort of commiserating about, yeah, this was a good idea, and it was a good try, but wise people don't hang their hats on it was a good idea. They hang their hats on how's it actually going? So thank you to our students and to our staff and the families we serve for their patience. And we tweaked that a little bit. We still just have two lunch shifts. And that's really kind of cool and has some nice side benefits, but we do appreciate everybody's patience. I don't know how many of you read The Eagle, but on the very front page today, there's a really nice feature story on one of our eighth graders, Zoe Hoffman. And Zoe, for her Betsma Project, did a kindness box with the help of the Luddy Brook Elementary School art teacher. It's located outside of Tom's Toys in downtown Gray Barrington. And really just, you know, popped open the Eagle app yesterday and saw the story, and then opened up the online version of the actual paper today. And now really exciting to see, yeah, A, it was nice to see great news about young people because there's just hundreds and hundreds of success stories every day that start with young people in the Berkshires, and it's nice when something gets printed about it. But really proud of that. We congratulate her, her friends who are keeping this project going, the kindness box. And to Wade and Amy, her mom and dad, who are just very proud of her, and we join them in being proud of her. We're really grateful for the opportunity for our kids to engage in athletics up at Monument. Ellie and I went over to the, I guess, I don't know, it was like there was a soccer game going on, and then there was like an 18 cross-country meeting, it was a week ago Wednesday. And as tough as it was to park and to navigate, what a joyful celebration of what our kids are up to and able to do. And really what a thrill to see our seventh and eighth graders on that cross-country course. Watching Everett beat everybody by like literally what looked like three quarters of a mile. Just, you know, as the dad of three cross-country runners, I was just like, where is the next person? And then Ellie and I passed him, he was doing like a cooldown lap. We passed him on our walk back. And I was like struggling to breathe just from walking. He's like, oh, hey, Miss Rizzo, how you doing? Man. But we're really grateful for the opportunity for our kids to do that. Really, really excited about Unified starting up. We have our back-to-school night this coming Thursday next week. It's September 18th. It's from 6:00 to 8:30. We will have a scholastic book fair in the library. And we'll have an ice cream social going on in the cafeteria throughout the whole event, so feel free to stop by. We're excited about that and looking forward to welcoming our families back. Also wanna say thank you to the DuBois Freedom Center. We've had several really good meetings with them to just try to form a partnership to help our students learn more about the person after whom their school is named. And so we're really looking forward to John Lloyd, the interim executive director, is coming up for our next PD Day, which is next Wednesday on the 17th. And Marcus Smith is a young man who's a doctoral student at UMass, who is their scholar in residence, is coming as well. And we're gonna do some things with each of our grade levels related to DuBois and Gray Barrington. So we're very, very excited about that and very grateful to those folks for including us in what they're doing. Lastly, in the good news, we had our opening assembly on Friday, the Friday past, where we gather everybody together and just, you know, talk about what it means to be a part of the DuBois community. And one of the things I suggested to our students is that they are privileged to attend, and those of us that are grownups are privileged to work at a great school. We are part of a great program. And that, from my 32 years in public education, the foundation of every great school that I've ever been in is that 100% of the people in that community are good people. You know, my father always told my brothers and I, it's great to be great, but it's much more important to be good. And to our families, to our staff, and really to our students, we have the foundation of greatness at DuBois, and it is a real pleasure to be there. Now, the challenges, the striking challenge, bees.
Yeah, that's where I don't want to hide.
Sorry, Steve. And I don't, it is just, it's really, you know, we have bee allergies, so it's, you know, kind of joke about it, but we have kids that this can get real serious real fast, so we're starting to, you know, we try to let kids be kids, and if they wanna take snacks out during recess and do things like that, we're gonna have to stop that. And we're just gonna try and pay better attention to some of the things that we're doing. But we're working with Steve and with Frank and with Scott, our head custodian, and see what we can do to get a handle on it, because they're really quite prolific at this point in the year.
In one sense, that's a good thing, right? Aren't we?
Ecolodics are great things.
Pollinators? Yeah. Yes. Yeah, it's, you know, we, and we're certainly not wishing to have freezing nights anytime soon, but we could do with less bees, so we are going to be working on that.
Are you saying it's getting worse from snacks, or?
We're just, I mean, the bees are there.
Yeah.
You know, the school is built on their turf. We get it. Do think the snacks and some of the things that get left in the trash from soccer practice, you know, we're gonna try and be a little better about getting the trash in on a daily basis from the outside. But we are doing some things that are drawing them closer to where we are. And so we're gonna control what we can control. But in the big picture, as challenges go, I think there's probably about, you know, 1,500 principals in Massachusetts, so we trade their challenges for our challenges. Thank you.
Don't they do these too?
We do. Yes. We have bees right by the gym, which is our dismissal door, so we've had to adjust. Yeah, we definitely have bees. Thank you for having me tonight. It's always a pleasure to be here. I will also echo that our start has been very smooth. Our staff and our students are adjusting to being back in school. And our families, our new families in particular, are adjusting to drop off and pick up. And it's been a really wonderful start. The feedback from the staff and the families is that, you know, that things have been going really well, which is lovely. Also, in some good news, our early morning program run by Shannon Foster is going really well. That is an adjustment from what we were doing before because students are being dropped off at the back door. And students are also, who are dropped off early, are able to get breakfast early, which helps to move the breakfast line faster, so kiddos are getting, we're still working on the kiddos getting to class sooner, but the opportunity is there for all kids to get to class quicker. And so I'm grateful for Shannon for running that program. And we are, we're having kids also, about half of them at a time, go up to the gym to also get the wiggles out before school starts. So that's super awesome. And additionally, the CLEO program in the afternoon is being run by Molly Murray, and that also is going really smoothly. And I'm really grateful to her for all of her hard work to sort of pick up some pieces and get it going. So that's really great. And families are adjusting to some of the changes with CLEO and the early morning program. And so it's great to see that it really is going well. Everybody who's in charge and involved is really invested and cares about the programs and the kids and their families. And that is all that really matters. And then in other news, our fourth grade has already gone on a field trip. So two of our fourth grade classes have gone up to the Clark Art Museum, and they had a wonderful time there. And the other two sections of fourth grade will go tomorrow. And then we are short, so my staff, I'm fully staffed, which is really incredible. I have two office staff. I have every pair of professional that I need, my teachers, I'm fully staffed and teachers, so that is just so awesome. For me, that's a real change in what it has been, so that's wonderful. I wanna say thank you to my custodians. We are short one custodian. And so Gino, my head custodian, Adam, and Dylan are there every day. And we do have Brian, who is subbing for us. But nonetheless, they are still a little shorthanded in the building. And, you know, with everything it entails, it looks as good as it always does, except for the leaves.
So I just have a couple things. I was gonna mention Molly Murray as well in the CLEO program. We'll share some more updates on that as we go forward. And then I know many of you are waiting with bated breath for our website rollout, and we're just behind a couple days. We're doing some fine tuning, and that'll likely happen in probably the middle of next week. So first the district and then the individual schools. But you might notice there's sort of like hints of it, like if you look at the district Facebook page, the logos change. It's starting to appear in workplaces. So my next thing is the grant approval update. You see a big packet from the Bar Foundation. This is what I mentioned at the last meeting when we just heard it, but this explains the context for it. Christopher and I are happy, or Colin, are happy to respond any questions. And I'd love it if you would make a motion to approve it. Again, it's $300,000 over two years, slightly more in the first, 157, and in the second, 143. And it's effectively unrestricted?
Well, it is, but if you read through the expectations, it's tied to what we propose we do. So they're very helpful in helping us set thoughtful goals, so I can't like turn Monument into a drive-in theater.
Right, we have to do what they're encouraging us to do, but we developed it in post-partnership.
Motion to accept Bar Foundation grant number 25-37043 in the amount of $300,000.
Second. Any discussion, questions? This is great.
The Bar Foundation is one of the most competitive public school grants in the country.
Yeah, it's a really big deal. They started in Boston, and now they're doing work across New England. Will Pogo, Sarah?
Aye.
Allison?
Yes.
Jason?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Sarah?
Aye.
Rich?
Yes.
And I, Julie Owens. Hey, great. So the next thing, and I'll have Sharon speak to it, or not matter, Rich, but is our budget development timeline for fiscal year 2017, because we're always a year ahead, right? And Julie, talk a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, go on.
So the beginning, the beginning public part of the process is the presentations to the finance subcommittee. And you'll see that typically we will go first with Steve Solak, Uli Colves, in order to give the principals time to get started. So for those of you who don't know the process, what we ask is that people come with a presentation to the finance subcommittee meeting with needs, met needs, ongoing needs. It doesn't come with a dollar attached so that we can warn people what's coming up. And then when we put the budget together, it comes with numbers. So then we can look back and say, Steve, you said you wanted three more custodians, and here's what the cost is. Now we see what that is. So then the next one is Kate. She tends to come with lots of data, lots of detailed data, which is good, so we all know where we're standing. And then the principals come in and talk about their needs. With principals, we typically do enrollment and projection by grades. And then at the high school, we do it by subject, so we can see the number of students either in grade sections or in subject sections. Then on the 20th, it's, now that the finance committee has all of this information, we'll go to them with a really very rough working preliminary draft budget. And then that's what they look at. So between October 30th and November 20th, all of the directors and administrators meet with Peter and the business administrator and go over their budget requests. We try to refine it a little bit before that meeting on the 27th. Then we review it again, the 12, I'm sorry, 12/11, just before we do the initial school committee overview. That overview is very rough. It looks like the budget's gonna be X million of dollars. Here's what the assessment looks like. Don't really get into the detail because we don't know what the impact is actually gonna be until we get the governor's budget. The health insurance costs are set in January. It's usually the last Monday. This year, it's going to be the last Wednesday. We found that that's just an easier day for people. Then on the 29th, we should have the governor's budget as well, and we'll be looking at what that looks like. Then we'll schedule the, well, we'll request the public hearing scheduled on the meeting, a school committee meeting on the 29th. Budget materials go out to all of you, and then the budget presentation to the school committee on the 12th of February. Finance committee will meet following that to see what kind of tentative changes based on feedback from the school committee. And then we always have the proposed public hearing with a possible vote. And then we hold two days in case we need to continue the discussion. Questions?
Sharon, you disappear between October 30th and November 20th, right?
I actually, I actually don't disappear until the 30th of November now, because I had initially said the 3rd of November. But the new administrator won't be starting until the 27th of October, and we do wanna have a few weeks just to, I mean, she does a lot of this already, but not in regions, so we need to go all.
No, that's awesome, Karen, that theory. That's a perfect, yes.
And then connected to that, my intent is to set aside some number of hours after Sharon leaves formally in case there needs to be some consultation, because you can learn, you can absorb some stuff when you're in the role, and three weeks later, something might pop up. Right, right. Anyone else? Perfect.
Is that one?
Great. Thank you. So the next thing on the agenda is the NSBA update, which is a standing item, but I think that really comes in the context of the new business. Jason, do you, I mean, there's so much going on, right? There's a public meeting.
I would just say the only thing we need to mention is we have our last big public forum next Tuesday, September 16, 5:15 tours, 6 o'clock in the auditorium, the presentation begins. So I'd love to see as many of you, it's gonna be online as well too, but it will be some smaller conversations at the libraries in the district, the different towns, senior centers, we can talk about that at later meetings. But this is the last big, where everyone from the architectural team will be there, the building committee, so love to see them on the 16th.
And they'll be in person, and people could also attend virtually, if they should. Person's better. So belonging and safety, sort of three big things. Every year, we work closely with the Jewish Federation to remind folks around holidays and religious holidays and not to schedule things. And that's all gotten out to teachers and staff, and we're doing that again. Jake mentioned the work with the DuBois Freedom Center, which we're very excited about. And it's a little early to share this, but we're starting conversations with a group of students up at Williams and the Stockridge Muncie. and the uh Stockbridge Muncie group that are housed at Williams to to look at some opportunities around uh uh curriculum or lessons connected to the Stockbridge Muncie, uh which which is another nice thing uh that that really connects us to to the land and 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 working with them. So we're excited about that. So I think that's it uh for me till we get to the other items. Okay, let's go. Subcommittee policy has not met. Buildings and grounds?
Has not met, but we're gonna schedule a meeting next three weeks.
Superintendent of other regional town leaders, correct?
Done, yes.
Finance, what do you have?
No, we've not, remember, I'll break for the last meeting or meeting in two weeks.
Negotiations have not started to meet yet, while focusing on November fourth, and we will start. David, do you want to talk about the personnel? Yeah, so a couple of things. Uh, we brought Tom Roy back, who had just retired, to teach a point two project lead the way class that was connected to the biology teacher. Um, Haley Salina, who's a part-time phys ed teacher, that also worked as a part-time uh parent professional with some of our other times. Uh, and then uh Fox Riska has become the evening custodian supervisor at the middle school. Um, and and Tim Alcoy is is working in food service at the at the high school. Um, the rest of it's fairly straightforward. A a number of mentoring positions. Where we do it because it's a good thing to have mentors for incoming teachers, and and we also do it because it fulfills a a state and a licensure obligation. But the intent there is uh if we if we support people really well, then our our, then we retain those people. Right? They're more successful and and we we retain them. Um, and then some more, um, uh, I'm sorry, it says the whole thing, but but on the backside, but there are some more mentoring folks.
Thanks.
Um, next, no old business, new business, for the proposed vote on the MSBA ballot language. Um, so interested to foreshadow it, maybe for Rich, for his, uh, this is language that has been vetted by our bond council uh and the MSBA and the district's attorney. Uh, I urge you not to change it into accepted whole clock.
Even if there's a grammatical error?
No, if you find a grammatical error, bring it to my attention, and I'll be happy to change that. But but everybody remembers that thing with the comma up in main. Uh, we want to be very careful with grammatical errors.
So why don't I make the motion on first question, Sis?
Okay.
Voted that the Berkshire Hills Regional Schools District hereby appropriates the amount of one million five, oh, sorry. One hundred fifty-two million sixty-seven thousand sixty-four dollars for the purpose of paying the costs of the Monument Mountain Regional High School project in the Berkshire Hills Regional District here and after called the district. To replace the existing Monument Mountain Regional High School with a new facility serving students in grades nine through twelve on the site of the existing school at six hundred Stockbridge Road, Great Barrington, including the payment of all costs incidental related there too, here and after called the project. Which school facility shall have an anticipated use of life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren of at least fifty years and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, here and after referred to as the MSBA, set amount to be expended at the discretion of the School Building Committee and the Berkshire Hills Regional School District Committee. To meet the appropriation, the district is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to chapter seventy-one, section sixteen N of the general laws and the district agreement as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The district acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-titling discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. In the project costs, the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district, provided further that any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA shall not exceed the lesser of one fifty, fifty-five and fifty-hundredths percent uh of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed, executed between the district and the MSBA. Further voted that the debt authorized vote shall be submitted to the registered voters of the district member towns for approval as a district-wide election to be called and held on Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand twenty-five in accordance with the provisions of chapter seventy-one, section sixteen N of the general laws and the district agreement. Question must pass. Uh, atta- as attachment B, form of school district member town ballot question, shall the town of Great Barrington be allowed to exempt from the provisions from the provisions of proposition two and a half, so-called the amount required to pay the town's allocable share of the bond issued by the Berkshire Hills School District for the purpose of paying costs to replace the existing Monument Mountain Regional High School with a facility serving students in grades nine through twelve on the site of the existing school, including payment of all costs incidental related there too. Attachment B, form of school district member town ballot question, shall the town of Stockbridge be allowed to exempt from the provisions of proposition two and one half, so-called the amounts required to pay the allocable share of the bond issued by the Berkshire Hills Regional School District for the purpose of paying costs uh to replace the existing Monument Mountain High School project, the new facility serving students in grade nine through twelve on the site of the existing school, including the payment of all costs incidental related there too. Further, as attachment B, form of school district member town ballot, shall the town of West Stock which be allowed to exempt from the provisions of proposition two and one half, so-called the amounts required to pay the town's allocable share of the bond issued by the Berkshire Hills Regional School District for the purpose of paying costs to replace the existing Monument Mountain Regional High School with a new facility serving students in grades nine through twelve at the site of the existing school, including the payment of all costs incidental related there too.
I have a second. Second, I have a motion and a second. So just a little bit of explanation, maybe Peter, you're gonna do that. The uh attachments will be voted on by each town select board, and it will be a separate ballot. The overrides will be a separate ballot, so you'll have two ballots in your hand. So looking, people who are listening will look towards the select boards of each town to have a ballot question put on. Uh, Peter, you go ahead. Do you want to mention? Or Jason? No, the 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 first one, I really, I think it's, or do you want to do it as as one motion for the voted and further voted? Uh, just, I I just want to clarify, yes.
Oh, you thought I should be just on the first one?
I I don't know. I don't I don't think it matters. I just want to clarify.
No, that's usually done as one motion.
It's okay. Do it as one.
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
There's some repetitive language in the Great Barrington. There's the pay and cost of paying costs.
It's an off, right?
Three times, yes. It is.
It's an off.
It is.
Yeah.
So it's it's just.
It's just heavy.
It's just the type. Also, I think, and you can throw spitballs at me, because the first sentence of of the main uh vote is subjective, subjunctive, the word should be appropriated in the first line, not appropriates. But I would draw that attention if um.
They've got the meaning of a state board.
I don't think that rises to the problem of a can, of a misplaced comma, but um, and this is a frequent, frequently ignored. So, okay, I'm getting, again, the repetitive language needs to be removed.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I missed that, yeah. Anyone else? So I think the obvious question someone's gonna ask, we're a little more into this, is why one hundred fifty-two zero six seven? You have to appropriate the the whole amount and then remove the MSBA grant. So if anybody's watching or if anyone is curious, that's how this works. We're not, we're not going to spend one hundred fifty-two of school district money. We'll expand one hundred fifty-two minus the MSBA grant, which is between fifty-nine and sixty-one million.
And that's stated in number two of the bottom, the total maximum grant determined by the MSBA and the amount of borrowing authority paying pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed. That's very important that people hear that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys are gonna have to say that a thousand times.
So I just wanted. Yeah, go on the record for that now, so that's, right, when you vote, read the whole thing and and make sure you understand that. Some people may not get past the fifty-five and fifty-hundredths.
Right.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes.
You go right then.
How would you explain uh proposition two and one half to someone? How would you explain that, like, I, I personally always have trouble with the more questions on voting. And so some people understand the first part, but not the second parts. So how would you explain the second part simply to somebody?
So this is just maybe an issue to come from Sharon or somebody else, a more official thing, and maybe it will come in the future. But proposition two and half was just a cap on how much taxes can increase in any given year in any municipality. And what this does is you can, which makes long-term capital planning almost impossible because if you're buying a police cruiser that you're gonna pay off over five years, one of those years, like, that expense may trip without how much it can, taxes can increase. Now, you can, a town can increase taxes all they want. It just means town meaning can't do it alone, that they have to go have a ballot. We've all voted on it in Great Barrington. Every year almost we have it in Great Barrington for some reason. So what the state change or what the law says is, if you're doing a big long-term capital project, you could just vote one time to exempt the project for the rest of the time. You don't have to come back every year. And so so if this passes and then we decide to exempt the expense from this proposition two and a half, you'll have to vote on it now. Voters will have to approve it now, but they won't have to re-improve it every year because there's gonna be a new tax bill every year going forward. So um, but I think, what did you guys move, right? Initially, we presented a couple of things this year.
Yeah, it's it's usually, it's all capital.
Yeah, it can only be capital.
Yeah, it's it's all capital. And, you know, that's why you don't vote for a police cruiser for twenty years when the police cruiser has electric, right, instead of three. Um, the other thing to realize with the two and a half override is, I understand this, but the district, the first page that Rich read, the the motion, is what we need to have pass for the district. Each town has the option of not presenting a two and a half override. There'd be no reason not to do that. But if a two and a half override doesn't pass in the town, but our ballot question passes in the district, the town is still burdened with the jibor. So there's, there's one vote to get this project through. But if I was a town, and and obviously I have something to do with Great Barrington, no matter how someone votes on the district vote, which I hope they vote yes, they should automatically vote yes on the other. Because if the district passes, the town needs that two and a half override. Eileen, you have a question?
Over wait on Eileen.
Oh, oh, sorry.
One second, Eileen, go. Okay, go ahead, Eileen.
I'm looking at the page in the packet for a vote for regional school district. All of that is the ballot question?
Yes.
Okay, it's not just a couple of sentences.
Clear as mud.
Go ahead, Rich.
Uh, no, I mean, this is, this is like, obviously ceremonial and to some degree of a long process. But I think we should also thank Jason and the other members of this committee on the building committee, because the work they did was amazing um um that we got to this point. So um, I think that's worth acknowledgement.
Yes.
Amen.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
So let me clarify. If thi- if this passes, which I wanted to do, obviously, and Great Barrington does not pass the override, where does that money come from to pay our share?
As I understand it, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, Great Barrington would have two choices. Basically, close the town because it's a large war ring, or they come back and have another vote. That's my understanding.
Yeah, okay. So I think people, that needs to be out there too.
Yeah, I think the towns need to help us publicize that.
Yeah.
Because it's in their best interest, all three towns, to pass the override.
Yeah.
You you want to vote no on the ballot question, I respect your vote. I don't agree with it, but vote yes on the override.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I also just think people should go in knowing that the language is a little bit.
Blonky, is the inseparable vernacular?
Maybe?
Yeah.
Just before hand and just understand that it's just like this yes or no.
I think it's part of our, I think it's part of our educational process that we have to let people know, yeah, you can read it, but fear is really what it says. Yeah.
Amen. That should be at every one of these meetings.
Yeah.
Having, um, I'm a warden of precinct B, but not for this vote. I'm not gonna be there. Um, I agree with you. I get many questions as to what does this mean? And I really think it's important that um maybe the outreach committee can do it, is that there's an information sheet that says what this means, very much like what the state gives us when there are all the ballot questions. Um, and I'm not sure what the legality is. Um, I don't think it's this committee's jurisdiction to do that. I I don't think, I'm not sure if we're allowed to to pass out an information sheet. You can't carry it in, um, you can't give it to people as they're voting. You can, um, you can't give out material at the, at the precinct, um, at the election centers.
We'll do, we'll do what is legal. We'll figure it out. Anyone else? It's time for the vote. Sarah. Allison. Allison, are you still there? You're unmuted.
Yeah, aye.
Thank you. Jason.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yes.
Sarah.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye, yes.
And aye, it's unanimous. And thank you, everyone. And thank you, everyone involved in this process, echo what Rick said. Okay. Rich, you want to go on the next one?
Yeah, so I think we we talked about several times now, the the um, and we've had some success in the past with making sure that we clearly, you know, um, stay in our position with more than just our votes on this committee. And um, uh, obviously, this is probably the most important vote any of us have ever taken on this committee, um, besides Steve, maybe.
My first building.
Um, so the, and obviously, our vote stands on its merit, but I think, um, and I know we've talked about this having some kind of unified statement as to what our vote was about and why we did it and explain it. Um, for those guys in the building committee who have been talking about this for two years and doing meetings, I think sometimes it's alarming, you know, how little actually translates into the public sphere, even though we do so much work here. Um, so I I did, I ripped together a quick statement, which is really just pulling from prior minutes of meetings where we've discussed this, and from the meeting minutes of the building committee, from the comments people have made, and just tried to boil it down into an easy um digestible form that we could put out. Um, uh, my plan was it to, was only to bring this forward if it was unanimous today, and it was. Um, and like, if Andy Potter's not here, but we've been chopping on this tree together for long enough that I know exactly how he was gonna vote. Um, so I think if I pass this around, everybody can take a look at it. We can decide whether it's something we want to act on tonight, talk about tonight. It could form the basis for earlier conversations. I don't mind reading it.
Why don't you read it in the form of a motion? And then if we decide to withdraw the motion, if there's people who think you're, it doesn't need to, I think it's terrific.
You want to say, think I'm crazy, and you hold it back, because you said they already know I'm crazy, but they think this is crazy. Yes, yes. Yes.
Now, but but let's do this in form of a motion, read it for the people who are gonna watch this meeting.
Okay.
And and I think it's important enough that it should take the time to do that.
Let's see, everybody's got a copy?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Um, so moved um to issue the following statement of the Berkshire Hills Regional School Committee regarding its vote to ask voters approval for a new Monument Mountain Regional High School. At our September eleventh, two thousand twenty-five meeting, we, the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee, unanimously voted to approve a ballot question and endorsed the construction of a new Monument Mountain Regional High School building at the existing site to be funded in part by the Massachusetts School Building Authority here and after MSBA. Voters will be asked to approve the project on Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. We endorse the Massachusetts School Building Authority uh funded project because it is the best option for our students, for taxpayers, and for our community. Monument Mountain was built in nineteen sixty-eight, and while the building has been well-maintained, it is now obsolete and at the end of its life cycle. It is no longer safe, and it is incredibly cost inefficient. More importantly, despite the brilliant work of teachers and staff, the building is disadvantaging our students and preventing us from moving forward with the next generation vocational and college preparatory education our students and our local economy deserve. Every other high school of of its era in Berkshire County has been rebuilt or renovated. The district commissioned a construction cost estimator firm to study our options. They determined that the cost of necessary repairs that we. that we must undertake to simply bring the building in compliance with modern codes and laws is eighty nine million dollars. The cost of this quote base repair unquote or quote code upgrade unquote would not receive any safe funding, so the cost will fall directly to taxpayers. The pro the pro the proposed project that we now submit to voters has been planned for over three years by the school committee, the local building committee made up officials and volunteers from all three towns, the MSBA, and professionally retained architects, engineers, data analysts, cost estimators, and financial analysts. The proposal is for a new three-story high school just west of the current building, partially set into the existing hill to reduce the building's overall scale. Once a new building is complete, the existing building will be demolished to make way for improved parking, circulation, and new fields. The construction will not interrupt school operations at the existing building. Most importantly, the new building will be fully ADA compliant, net zero ready, and with modern design and security features to protect our students. Monument is one of the largest high schools in Berkshire County and serves and will continue to serve a lot of students. The MSBA has been running accurate estimates of school enrollments for a long time and has determined that a future monument should be built to serve four hundred and eighty five per year. This is in line with the numbers served by the new Wakona High School in Dalton and the new Maguayla High School in Williamstown. The building will include expanded and modernized vocational space for the existing automotive, horticulture, and early childhood education programs, bringing those popular programs in line with their much newer counterparts in northern Berkshire County, North Berkshire County. The project will also enable us to add an entirely new vocational program to train the next generation of electricians. Academic and CBTE classrooms will be adjacent rather than siloed, allowing for greater integration, science lab, a welcoming library media center, and a ample auditorium, community gathering space that will be brought up to modern specifications. To put it simply, this building will allow us to continue and build upon our nationally ranked college preparatory program and dramatically expand our vocational offerings to rival any CBTE program in the state. We made the final decision to put the new building project to voters after the MSBA affirmatively voted to provide between fifty nine and sixty one million in funding to the project just this past August twenty seventh. The MSBA funding represents the largest single investment by the state and the district and the southern Berkshire economy in history. Also, the district received one point six million dollars in incentives from MassSafe. The total cost of the project will be one hundred fifty two million. So with the MSBA's contribution and the MassSafe grant, the local share of the obligation will be eighty nine to ninety one million, almost exactly what it will cost us to bring the existing building up to code. The local share will be will be funded through a fixed rate thirty-year bond, therefore spreading the costs and stabilizing the impact on taxpayers. The building project in partnership with the MS, the MSBA is a generational opportunity and investment in our future. It makes the most financial sense because as counterintuitive as it sounds, a new building will cost us less than fixing the old one. More importantly, like the first iteration of Monument Mountain, it will secure the viability of our community for generations. It will provide a world-class education to generations of students, provide a skilled workforce that will fuel our local economy and continue to be the anchor that retains and attracts working families.
Discussion. Well done.
How about a second?
Great. Do I have a second? Second. Anyone have any comments?
A couple of typos. I'm sorry, but I.
Oh, I think I think we'll authorize it to the superintendent to attend to any scripters errors.
So moved. Any discussion on this?
Um, I I'd like to see something, Rich's was really well done. I'd like to see something about the community use and how this building will be able to provide programs for the community in the evening, because that was one of the things that came out in the building committee discussions. Is there any way we could fit that in? That I don't really think that's an important aspect because the the building has now, the the there's not going to be anything for the community. There used to be many, many, many years ago, when I was first teaching, there was a night program that ran. Due to various aspects, one, the building itself, it stopped. And one of the selling points of the new building is that it will be accessible to people in after-school programs and at night where there could be courses offered.
All right, so why don't you just, why don't you make a motion to amend?
Okay.
To add the following after CDBA program in the state and just say what you just said.
Okay, I I tend to be gory, so I don't know what I said, but.
Okay, I'd like to.
Why don't you, why don't you make a motion to add your preceding comments in summary fashion after CBD program.
Yeah, we'll add it.
Okay. Yes, okay, I'd like to make a motion to add that that addendum that I just added or just spoke about.
So I'm voting in a second, and we will do this in two votes. Just because.
So I second his motion to amend.
A bill.
Okay, yeah.
Can I ask a question about the eighty nine to ninety one million?
Yes.
Should we explain why we haven't nailed that down?
That's not a matter of nailing it down.
Yeah, we can't really nail. It depends on on. I think the simplest way to explain it is it it depends on what's reimbursed and what's held in contingency or not held in contingency, so.
I mean, I don't need, I mean, this is long and and comprehensive. But.
There's no way to explain that in a sentence. It's pretty complicated.
It has to do clearly with the contingency where if we go money need help back and if we don't spend it all that we borrow, we only get we get less, but we'll, it's a percentage, so we'll spend less, so the total cost will be less.
Right. If you want to change that, sorry, if you want to change that, we'll be up to ninety one million.
Or or eighty nine to ninety one million subjected contingencies.
Well, from what I read, it's basically impossible if that if our cost will not be more than eighty nine million, because if it bumps, if it, if the reimbursement rate goes to the ninety one or back down to the to the the lesser of the two numbers, it would mean that we spent less on the project. So our cost will be the same, locked in eighty nine.
So should we take off the two eighty nine, ninety one million? Is leave it eighty nine million?
Yeah, it's a it's a contingency. I was leaving it in there because for some reason, that's what the architects and the building committee are saying, but you know.
Or approximately eighty nine.
Right, it's a it has to do with contingency and if we go over, we're going to get it back anyway, so it's.
If it's a, if it's an approvable reimbursable.
Exactly.
We've been doing this too long.
Do you want to vote on Bill's amendment first?
Yeah, we'll vote on Bill's amendment first.
Do you have another amendment?
I don't know. I I wanted to add other people. It's just a thought. I I'm not convinced that it would make sense, but I'm just wondering, you know, if we don't do anything, it's a code upgrade, but do we want to explain at all what it would be like for the kids that are in the school? You know?
I think I think this is.
I there's, I I I watched the word count for a lot of reasons on this, so you know, that there was there's there's a lot on the cutting room floor.
For sure.
You know, and a lot of more opportunities to talk about things.
Right, okay.
Yeah. I think in the forums too, we can explain what is that wonderful sheet that is what we're going to get for just base repair? There's nine major projects. And then there's another column which shows, okay, now we're going to have to add based on the assessed value of the school, thirty percent, you have to, which is reached by four point three billion, I believe, if I can remember the the column. And then the sprinkler system, and that is just base repair. And as I said to somebody the other day, we're doing nothing to approve anything about the school except repairing. We're not changing the size of the classrooms. We're not changing the size of Kristin L's auto facility, which doesn't allow them to put a car up more than ten feet. Uh, that's still going to be there.
You're shutting down the electrical program before it even starts?
And starting down a key program, yes. So that's what you get, and I think that can come out in the forums. I I just like this because as opposed to me, it's straightforward and not.
Hey, he's one of your students. Bill taught me how to write.
So let's take the first vote, which is Bill's amendment to Rich's uh original amendment. So let's take that first. And that's been made as a motion and seconded both bills. So Sarah?
Aye.
Allison? Jason?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Diane?
Yes.
Sarah?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And aye. Sarah, do you want to make an amendment?
No.
Okay, I just want to.
Yeah.
Okay, so now.
But I think her point is well taken, and that's something I think about is the base repair option is a financial logistical disaster.
Yeah.
It's a financial logistical disaster. Disaster for taxpayers, disaster for the kids.
Yep.
Right. Yeah.
And it takes such a long time.
Right. Yes.
The amount of time that it took. I think it was what, four years?
Yeah.
Four years?
Yeah, it was four years. The other, the other thing that's clear in here, which people are concerned that this project will actually cost more because of tariffs, et cetera. This is authorizing a up to, we can't borrow more without another vote. So I think this is very clear in here. This is the price.
Yeah.
And and you know. So so let's vote on the original motion as amended. Sarah?
Aye.
Allison? Allison?
Aye.
Thank you. Jason?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Sarah?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And aye, it's unanimous. Thank you, Rich, for authorizing this.
Thank you.
Well done, Richard.
Nicely done.
Yeah.
Well done.
Any public comment? Soon known by unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.